Six thirty and see we have a quorum. So I will call the meeting of this city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda tonight is approval of our consent agenda. Uh, item one is vouchers totaling one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars seventy-two cents. And everyone received copies of the vouchers. Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Second item is minutes for the eleven-one twenty-twenty-two regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, comments, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, and third, we have an appointment of gay funk to the planning commission. There are any questions about that? Hearing no questions or comments, I would ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next up is uh, our first public comment opportunity and tonight we have Betty Seibel here with us and Jared Jost. And if 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 you want to.
I just got her.
Well, what we'd like to do if we could. Is uh, so we can get you on camera. If you could come up and stand behind the podium, that would be great.
You guys are gonna.
This is a friendly place, Betty.
Except for our tens of viewers on.
Yeah.
I I brought Jared along so that if you asked me questions that I didn't have the answers for, why he could probably make up something that you had all.
There you go.
Very good. He is a member of our board and I'm chairman of the board and I'm confident that you all. The city council members got the uh, okay, the information that I talked about. I thought of several things that I would like to add to that and um, especially while I was laying in bed last night, all nervous about tonight and couldn't sleep. Yesterday at our board meeting, we kind of crunched the numbers to see whether I was being accurate in the thirty-five thousand. And um, I discovered that if we hadn't had a. Convection oven breakdown, we'd have been just under. Now we're closer to forty for the year, which is unfortunate. And our convection oven isn't even fixable because it's so old, we couldn't even get parts for it. Um, we have tables that are old, damaged, and so heavy that they're hard for us elderly to move around when we need to move around, when we need new tables. So these are just some things that are that are coming up. Um, at the board meeting yesterday, when I mentioned that I would be here. Uh, Peter Mangai, who is um, Salem Hall's administrator, said, be sure and tell them that we're keeping our seniors in Hillsborough. We've got seniors that are leaving town and if the senior center can be a, can be instrumental and do that, that's important. Um, I might mention that we've had several. Of our very good contributors leave us lately because they changed their address from earth to heaven. And should you choose to assist the senior center financially, I might mention that you won't be. It won't be unique to Hillsborough because there are quite a few other towns that I'm aware of in Hillsborough that are doing that in various ways. Um, some of them even um. By putting the employees of the senior center, like the cook and the site manager on their payroll. I thought that was kind of interesting uh, to supplement the the very high wage that the state pays. Um, you know, that was being facetious. So uh, now I'm just going to open it up to whatever questions you might have.
As far as you're aware, has the city ever participated in supporting the senior center in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And in terms of what, what you, what what do you really hope to accomplish today? I mean, what? If if you had your your uh, your your best outcome, what would that be after after meeting with us?
Okay, uh, well, I wouldn't say it would be the best out come, but one that would really delight us. Would be if for twenty-twenty-four, you would put us on the on the tax roll, if you want to call it, and on your budget. Uh, for ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, that that would just help a lot. Um, and I don't know whether you uh, would have the uh, capability of giving us a break on our utilities in the coming year. That would be a way of helping too. Something is better than nothing.
Anybody else have any questions for Betty or Jared?
Questions?
Comments?
Comments. They were in here a couple of times before and they always got turned down and a simple reason was. The council and the mayor and the city administrator fell out of time. That they didn't want to give taxpayer money to entities in town. And also if we give money to the senior center in West Superman Hillsborough Main Street or some other place from coming in and asking for money. You know, if we turn them down, then why do we give money to seniors? That's what we talked about. So now that there's now a different time.
I don't, I. I read it today, heard about today, so. I'm still mulling it over my head, what what this is really about, what we're asking for here.
Is that a curiosity? Is ten thousand dollars a year even feasible? With the budget, the way that it's set?
Um. She wouldn't. We would have to work it in someplace. Um, so I don't know. We'd have to make some decisions about where that would be, yeah.
What other, what other funding uh, mechanisms have you investigated? Has there been any, any uh, have you, is, I don't know what's out there?
Whenever we have the slightest inkling that there might be grant money available for something or anything like that, we jump on it and we apply for it. And sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't.
The the Hillsborough Community Foundation, we've been successful in getting grants from them on a yearly basis, like. Two thousand twenty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah.
To help out with projects.
And that's been helpful.
You know, I'm, I I started serving on the board a couple of years ago. And I never realized how dire the finances are there, especially because. Your average age of a person that has to work, serve on the board, go out and do fundraising is like eighty years old. You know, these people, most of them have lived in Hillsborough. They've given their lives to this community. When you look at the elderly people and what the government, everybody's trying to do is keeping them at home as long as they can. When you go to the nursing home, you use up your assets, they go on a spin down, they get on state assistance, just like that. It costs a fortune. The senior center allows people to stay home longer because of meals on wheels, the fellowship that people get there. And this is something, and even you in the back, I might, I hate to break this to you, but we're all headed there. No one's going to escape it. It it it's something that affects everybody. So you know, the city helping out here as our local nursing homes struggle. This is another place, another opportunity for people to have fellowship and to keep them home longer with with good meals, good nutrition. It's a place where people can go to have fellowship, you know, playing pool activities, just on and on and on. So it's 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 a. A great thing going in Hillsborough and would really like to see your support. We're not asking to 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 fund everything, just just a a minor part. We have an endowment that we gain money from. You know, they've been very proactive in in that, that's at one, almost a hundred thousand.
I don't even know.
But it's, you know, so so they've been very, very proactive in 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 doing things and they run a very. Um, economical budget and everything, so would would ask you to please consider this endeavor.
Did you say you've been pretty successful with grant money?
Um, yeah, yeah, we've worked hard at it.
Is there anything from the state that we could apply for or look into to help them out through grant money?
I do not know about senior centers stuff. Um, there are a ton of programs right now. It's hard to tell though. Without knowing a lot more about how their operations are set up, uh.
We we've got to have tho- those experts that are knowledgeable in that. And I think if there's anything out there, we would have gotten it.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's been exhausted.
Yeah, we're. I just didn't know if there's any.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's been looked into.
I know the state of Kansas does a lot of stuff with nursing.
Yeah.
I'm sure if they run anything.
We got one during COVID. Yeah. Uh, I'm the assistant site manager and and a week ago Monday Brenda had a training meeting in Vincent City and so I was in the office and. And one of the gals that eats there five days a week unless she has a medical appointment. Uh, came up to me and she said, Betty, I just hope this center keeps going. She said, it is the only thing I. Five days a week, Monday through Friday, it's you, it's my only out, getting out of the house and being able to talk to someone. Other than that, I'm just home.
It's a big name.
How would this fit into our strategic plan? Where would you, would you put something like?
Uh, community development. There'd be a community development portion of that, yeah.
So we have uh, we have uh, support. That we've done for our childcare situation that's uh, that's coming on. And this is just kind of the opposite end of that, I I guess, right?
Yeah. Different age group, yeah.
Yeah.
Cradle to the grave.
You know, I understand uh, Barney White, why, you know, in the past, because again, where do you start and where do you stop? But I mean, this is a, this is a critical. Piece of infrastructure, if you will, in our community and.
It is.
I'm not sure what the, what the appropriate response is at this point. I don't want to see it go away either, you know?
No, it means critical need.
You know, we've got uh, we've got a couple items up on our agenda that are involving potentially spending taxpayer money on fixing up property. In town that, and that's also a critical need and in in and an important thing, you know, in terms of the. Nature of of our community and and who we are and so. I don't know, you know, I I'm, I'm struggling here trying to figure out a way that we can help without. You know, creating necessarily an avalanche of of requests for funding from, you know, because we're not the Hillsborough Community Foundation, you know?
Right.
That's not our mission, but you know, we are here to uh, support the community.
It does keep people from being institutionalized sooner. Um, and that's a good thing. I've, I visit people that are institutionalized every week. And um. Having that freedom and that ability to be communicating with one another is huge, huge, huge. That life. In that stage of life. Makes all the difference. As far as quality of life. So I. I see that. I see what they're asking. It is, it is a critical, it's a critical thing. But uh. Yeah. Our 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 nursing homes do a great job, but they're still nursing homes.
Right.
You give up your car keys, you give up your freedom to go in there.
I just want to say thank you for considering.
Well, yeah, we're, and I think we're gonna, you know, it's, it's my thought that we continue to to consider. I have a question for city attorney. What, you know, we we have a, we have a mill levy for recreation. We have a mill levy for industrial development or economic development. I mean, is there? You know, their request for an ongoing tax situation? I mean, where does that? Fall in the realm of of possibility or is there a concern, any concerns or? Or?
There's, there's not to my knowledge, just, you know, it's a separate, separate mill levy. If it was something the city decided that it wanted to do, it would. Come out of the general fund and, you know, be part of the the budget every year.
Does that make it easier or harder?
Uh, it makes no difference real. I mean, you you still have to come up with the money, so it's. You know, half dozen of one, six of another, but uh, it would just be a matter, you know, if that's a priority, we would s- schedule it in and. Figure out where else we would make adjustments, basically. So, yeah. Ten thousand would be half a mil, give or take. A little bit less than that, so. That's what it would end up being. If you wanted to go straight taxes, but there, you know, without looking at it in front of me. There's probably some way to make that work. It would just be a matter of where you want to take the money from.
Well, I I I guess what, if the, if the council is willing, I would uh, I would task Matt. Uh, to to investigate potential sources of revenue within our, within our budgets. To uh, to see if there's a way that we could present it to the council and and um, and be able to make a decision.
I think if we're gonna be uh, help funding the childcare stuff, I think Dave, you make a great point. I think this is. Should be alongside that, so I I.
And and to be clear with the, with the childcare, what we did is we s- we subsidized the grant writing. For the uh, CDBG grant, which was what about seventy?
Seven hundred dollars, yeah.
So just, just to be, just to be clear, that was a one-time. One-time contribution. Now, now, you know, there's a, there's a non-cash contribution of. Yeah, this time, you know, that he's devoting to to that and and we all agree it's a priority and it's important. But I think this is, this is also very important as well. I mean, if we're looking at the possibility that that we can lose our senior center, I think that's a. That's not something I want to contemplate. I don't know about you guys.
So we need to make a motion to task Matt to.
I don't think we need a motion for that. I think it's just.
Asking to look into.
So is that something you could have by the next council meeting or would you want to go the 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 in the the second meeting in December?
Oh, it would probably take, yeah, the first meeting in December would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
Do we, I think maybe part of the question too is do we want to include it in our strategic plan?
As an item under.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can amend that at any time, so that's something you want to.
That's what you were thinking about, yeah.
Okay, well, I think that's the direction we'll, we'll add it to our uh, add it to our strategic plan and we'll. See where we might be able to come up with something. And then if you guys want to come back at first of December.
Sure.
What what's that date?
Number six.
December sixth.
Let me look. Six.
Six. We welcome you to come back. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and thank you for your service.
Take care.
My girl, thank you.
Okay, we have a proclamation to uh, to to deliver.
We'll round up the troops.
I think we're gonna have to move into the next room to get the picture.
Uh, I'm not sure if we're gonna have enough.
Even in here?
Oh, in there for sure.
Yeah, I think we ought to.
We want to get it on camera, we're gonna have to be.
Okay, let's, yeah, we'll, we'll start. We'll take a picture out there.
Yeah.
Come on in ladies and.
Come on in. Move to the front. Come on around.
Yeah, yep, right around here.
You didn't realize what was next on your agenda.
Yeah. We've got a nice CM route.
Come on in.
Come on, you gotta be on.
You gotta be in here too. Yeah, you gotta be.
Andy, why don't you actually just come right up front here?
Really?
Yes, really. For reals. Okay, well, we've got a special group of people here tonight. This is the twenty-twenty-two two A state champion volleyball team. Representing Hillsborough, Kansas, USD four-ten. Hillsborough Trojans. So I've got a proclamation for you ladies that I'd like to read. And then we're gonna present it. We're gonna take a picture and we might even go out there and where we have a little more room and take one more picture when we're done. So this is a proclamation of the city of Hillsborough, Kansas. Whereas the twenty-twenty-two Hillsborough High School Girls Volleyball Team roster, including McKenna Reed. Wave your hand. Savannah Shahan. Anne Sleep Brewer. Talia Jost. Kingsley Ratliff. Zaley Worth. Ella Suderman. Demiah Cox. Healy Brewer. Kirsten Cluver. Lauren Vogt. And Bailey Galworth. Did I miss anybody? Okay, and whereas the twenty-twenty-two Hillsborough High School Girls Volleyball Team is staffed by head coach Sandy Arnold. Assistant coaches Jill Heine. Erin Carr. And whereas, there's a lot of whereas. On October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the Hillsborough Trojans competed in the Kansas State High School Activities Association. Girls Class Two A State Volleyball Championship. The Trojans emerged victorious as state champions, defeating a talented Smith Center team twenty-five, twelve. Twenty-five, thirteen, and whereas the twenty-twenty. Two Trojan team included six seniors, Cory Arnold. Healy Brewer, Demiah Cox, Kirsten Cluver, McKenna Reed, and Ella Suderman. Competing, completing their high school careers as state champions. And whereas Cory Arnold, Savannah Shahan, Ella Suderman, and Zaley Worth. Received All-State Tournament Honors. And whereas Zaley Worth and Cory Arnold received first-team All-League honors. Savannah Shahan and Ella Suderman received second-team All-League honors. And Kirsten Cluver received honorable mention All-League honors and whereas. The twenty-twenty-two Kansas State High School Activities Association. Girls Class Two A State Volleyball Championship marked Saint Head Coach Sandy Arnold's fourth state championship. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Hillsborough. Formerly honor the Hillsborough High School Girls Volleyball Team for their outstanding performance. At the twenty-twenty-two Kansas State High School Activities Association. Girls Class Two A Volleyball Championship. The mayor and council will hereby proclaim Tuesday, November fifteen, twenty-twenty-two, as Trojan Girls Volleyball State Champions Day. Yeah.
All cities. Going in this purpose.
Congratulations.
Can I add something?
Sure.
We have a coach of the year here and we have a player of the year here, Zaley.
Yeah. So, Coach, there you go. And let's move on now here.
There we go. Takes a picture.
Go Hillsborough.
Yeah.
The better, not the best. One was. They lost in the last game today, but so it should have won.
It's hard. They beat my alma mater.
My daughter was on the team last time.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Think I was gonna make it through all those.
That was fun. Woo, fun.
Okay. We're gonna move into our uh, public hearing, you know, our first public hearing for one-on-one South Main Street. And uh. Mr. Styles, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Yeah, so this is a follow-up. You guys want to say?
Yes.
Excellent.
Try to find.
Define this.
Well, you're joining us for a public hearing now.
Yes, we're having a public hearing for one-on-one South Main. That would be the Rio Shack and Quickwood's building. Uh, so we set this hearing back forty-five days ago, uh, September nineteen. Um, we have not received, we've sent all the notifications out. We've done everything publication-wise that's required to do that. Uh, we have not received any conversation back from the owner. Um, so we're moving forward with with this uh, hearing and with this action potentially. Um. You know, it's the same situation we talked about before with the roof needs to be replaced. We have estimate on that about sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, if we were to go forward with this, we would have forty-five days, uh, within forty-five days of the date, the person would have. Or the owner would have the opportunity to convince work on that. Uh, if that does not happen, then we have the ability to go in and make that correction to correct the and build the roof or we could razz the structure, but we don't do that. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at with it. I know there's been some talk. I know there's an active offer on the table for the property. Um. I I don't believe that it has changed hands and I don't know that anything has moved forward, particularly with that particular property, so. I would answer any questions you may have if you do that or I defer to Andrew on any of the technical pieces of it. So if that should be sold in forty-five days to a different owner. What would be the requirement for that new owner? Would they have still to? How, yeah.
Or to start all over?
Or to start all over again?
Uh, yeah, we would, we would likely have to start the process over again.
Okay.
Okay, um, now we've. As we talked about in the past, if you pass this resolution today, we're probably gonna publish that of record. Um, which may preserve something right of the city moving forward if it were to change hands. The worst-case scenario, we'd have to start over.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? You have a recommendation, Mr. Styles?
I would recommend moving forward with the resolution. Um. You know, if it, if it comes down to that it does change hands, the likelihood of the new owner wanting to make that correction. Would probably be pretty high. Uh, I would think that would be a portion or a part of any plan for the building in the future or any transaction with the building. Uh, would require either the owner to fix it or or it to to happen if they're gonna be putting it to productive use, so. Uh, I think that it it kee- keeps the city in a position that if that does not happen, that we can move forward and make that correction. Because the roof does need to be repaired one way or the other, so.
I move that we move forward with revolution, resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen. If I can interrupt for just a second, I want to make sure that we. Give an opportunity for any public comment.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's why you're here.
Right, thank you.
Any members of the public? Uh, any comments regarding this matter? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we now have a motion on the table to uh, to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen. Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Okay. Mo- a uh, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen is hereby approved and the mayor will sign said resolution. We now uh, that will close the public hearing on one-on-one South Main. And next item is a public hearing on one-twenty-two West Grand Avenue, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a little bit different situation. This actually has an active contract to purchase this building. This is the building. To the west of Dale's Grocery Store's parking lot. Uh, the way I understand it, uh. Mr. Franz is gonna purchase that building and demolish it uh, as part of expansion to his. Uh, parking space, so uh, with this one, I don't think I would re- I would recommend not moving forward with passing the resolution. But obviously, we still need to have the hearing and uh, have the conversation about it.
Any questions from the council? Anyone here from the public care to comment on the property at one-twenty-two West Grand Avenue?
Is there a timeline on that? He is in the process of closing on it, so it hasn't officially changed hands, but I know that there's an active contract and it's. They're moving things out in order to facilitate all that, so.
And I have seen them moving things out. And I had, did have a conversation with Mr. Franz, so.
Good.
Good.
Any comments by anyone? Hearing none, uh I'd accept a motion to table the uh resolution twenty twenty two dash fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Sir, second?
Second.
Hey, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? We're now voting to table that resolution, Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Uh resolution twenty twenty two dash fifteen is ta- hereby tabled. Uh to an indeterminate time or forever.
Yeah, probably forever.
All right, next item up is a is a business item, which is the setting of our twenty twenty two budget amendment hearing for December twenty, six thirty P M. What is the uh council's availability? Are we available on the twentieth? That in the regular?
That's our normal meeting.
Is there a normal meeting? Okay.
All right. I might be going that week. There's a chance that I might be going to Florida prior to when my family, I'll have to check with all.
The uh if you if you're not in town, but the opportunity is is available to join via Zoom, you can you can certainly do that and still participate.
I might be on the beach, but we'll see.
That's okay. Just make sure, make sure you shut your mute button. We don't want to hear the waves crashing and you get jealous.
But I do want to see the video part of it, too.
Yeah.
Right, absolutely. Jacksonville, so it won't be terribly warm.
So do you need a motion to set that hearing or?
Uh yeah, I would answer any questions you might have about the amendment if you want to look at that. We've got uh several funds we're changing this year, a little bit more cleanup work, recreation, we uh have a carryover from last year that we have to pay out, but we have to do an amendment to do that. Debt service, we ended up transferring more money in and paying bonds out of that than we originally intended. We had originally had some of those put in different funds and were paying them out of there, but we just decided to transfer them all in and pay them out. Uh municipal court, we've done more business in municipal court than originally thought, so we have to amend that. C I P, that takes care of the ARPA money that we put in there. Um uh so we have to make an amendment to to make sure that we're covered on that. The water fund, we had some some things happening there. Uh big drivers there with our our valve issue we had earlier this summer had some corrections in the uh employee and employee side, too. We've um originally planned on allocating some of the salaries a little bit differently and it's fixed for next year's budget, but we haven't got it quite right yet. Dialed in since we've merged the water and sewer departments, it's created a little bit of a a thing there. Of course, chemical costs were increased this year. Uh they're about twenty percent higher than we thought they were going to be, so we end up having to spend uh refuse, the big thing with that has been has been the diesel fuel that has gone crazy. We're um you know, two hundred percent above where we thought we would be on diesel for this year. Um so making some corrections there. And then in the electric fund, the big thing driving that was the cost of power increased significantly uh over some of those summer months. So those are what the this were driving the amendments. Um but yeah, those that's that's the basically the year end kind of cleanup stuff and we're hoping to have that December twentieth.
Hey, it's gonna make us drive dive into the reserves to pay for all that, or is that?
Uh and the electric fund is the one that's the one that's a little scary. Uh you know, we've had that increased cost of power and the continuing surcharge. Yeah, we're gonna have to dive into that down a little bit. We're gonna end with less than I would like to, or less than comfortable with. Uh but Brooke Carroll from K P P will be here on December fifth, uh our meeting, first meeting in December to talk rates. So that'll be something we're gonna need to to look at for next year. But we certainly have to balance that budget, so. I don't know if we have much choice. Everything is more expensive.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to set the twenty twenty two budget amendment hearing for December twenty at six thirty P M. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we need to move into a land bank meeting. So we will uh we will recess instead of adjourn, I think.
Yeah, recess or
recess uh this this meeting and move into a land bank meeting. So first item up on our land bank meeting is approval of minutes. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes of our last land bank meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman By moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. First item up is approval of farm lease with Kim Cope, Mr. Styles.
Uh this is just a continuation of our business in October. We've been updating our land leases and so we've got two to to look at tonight, the final two. Uh it'll go from with Kim Copes. I believe he was a cash rent person already, but uh we move the other, we had two that weren't cash rent. We were doing crop share on those. Uh this moves it to a cash rent, uh same terms as we talked about at the last meeting where it'll automatically increase uh each year for three years. So uh we've got King Kim Coop, Kim Coop, and then Larry Funk uh will be the Tuesday night. So okay, Cope, sorry.
All right, any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the farm lease with Kim Cope. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh now the next one is uh the approval of a farm lease with Larry Funk. Any questions regarding that lease? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve that lease. Councilman McCarty moves second.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and that takes us back into our city council meeting. We will adjourn the land bank meeting and go to city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
There are a couple things tonight. Uh Gossel and Peabody, we've had this kind of a handshake agreement with them to do building inspections for the past ten years ish. Uh the understanding there has always been that if you know, if it's minimal and we have the time and capacity to do it, we'll we will do those inspections. Uh both Peabody and Gossel have gotten into this kind of some situations where it's required a lot more attention. And I think they'd actually like to get more into the code enforcement side. Uh Ben was feeling a little bit uncomfortable with that. Um didn't really have, doesn't feel like he has the capacity to take that on, especially in Peabody. There's quite a bit to do in Peabody with that. Um and so he he asked me if it would be okay if we were to to back away from those agreements, given that they're not anything that's particularly formal. Uh and I said that would be fine if he didn't feel like he could, you know, effectively do those things. So we've we've kind of backed away from those agreements. Uh we've offered to help them out, give him some technical advice if necessary. I've offered to go down and talk to him about, you know, how to set some of these things up. Uh but if they're just not in a position where they're formally set up to do some of those things and so uh it really ended up being a situation where we felt like we had to opt out uh of doing that. We'll still help them as we can, uh but we're not gonna be in the business of doing their inspections and their code enforcement for them. So uh that's that's the thing that's changed there. Got our October financial report on there. Um big thing there, we're kind of transitioning some of those funds. We're getting rid of some single use funds. Kind of simplifying and streamlining some stuff. Uh we've had it, there's a cross post is cross posting issue that Danielle explains on page two and three there about how things went over a month and so looks a little wonky. Had an issue with the rec commission there where we accidentally uh we gave them too too large of an appropriation out of their fund and so it created a negative in there uh on our balance sheet for that. Uh we're correcting that, but it won't show up until this month. So um those kind of where that is. And once we get everything kind of done and once I get the sales tax receipts, I'll give you a dashboard report for that um at the end of this month. Health insurance savings report is attached there. Uh this month, we saved a little over five thousand dollars compared to the fully insured Blue Cross plan. Uh done really well with this this year. We managed to retain two twenty two thousand in savings this year and our balance or claims reserve balance got over a hundred thousand a little earlier than I anticipated. I kind of thought it would be in January, but we ended up doing it here at the end of October. So uh at a hundred and seven thousand in the bank there and our our target is a hundred thousand. So now we can kind of back off some of those um deposits that we've been doing in that. Kind of manage that a little bit more actively. Uh so that's a good thing. That money will stay within the general fund or the utility funds that support those. Uh so that's that's a good thing. It's really been very positive and uh mayor and I were kind of talking about that a little earlier, that we really haven't had any negative feedback from many of the employees either. It's been pretty well received and I think everybody's kind of figured out how to use it. So uh it's been a good transition, pretty good, pretty good deal there. Uh we've got a new firefighter, Trent Jones, completed his prospecting period and got approved by the vote for the fire department. So we welcome Trent um to the fire department. He's got a Trent's a college student. Um he's got a background. He actually served at the in the Las Vegas Fire Department. Um spent some time doing that. So yeah, he's got a busted foot right now, so he's not much good for going and burning buildings, but um that'll get better. And so we're we're looking forward to having him on. Um had some issues with some sump pumps at the swimming pool. We're trying to work that out. There's no danger of anything freezing or breaking or anything like that. It's just we gotta work through that. Um doing some auditing of our electrical accounts and found a few people who were receiving the city internal rate. We have a a rate we pay ourselves for electricity. Uh there's been some folks that are on there and we're not quite sure how they got on there, but we're gonna correct that, too. Um so that's one of the things we're working on with that. As we go through our rate structures, we like to make sure we have the correct stuff on our things. So it's been, that's been a positive experience, too. Uh the mayor and I went to the rate forum. Um good news in electrical, we've got an uh exp- expiring contract with, is it Jeffrey?
Jeffrey, it's a coal contract. It's the last coal contract that K P P has.
So that's expiring next year, which will reduce our cost of energy, which will be great. Uh that'll be nice. So um and then I I mentioned that Brooke will be here, I think, on December sixth or fifth, excuse me, for uh to talk rates. So we'll have that. Uh city Christmas party invite, I get that there for you. If you want to come to that, you and your fellows are guests are welcome to come. Uh we just need to know by the end of the week so we can plan for food. Um so if you're interested, let me know. I'm gonna be out next week on vacation. Um couple other things, Joe Alvarez's retirement party is the twenty second of December uh from four to six. That's a Thursday. Yeah, I'll be here in City Hall. So I don't, that should be the last one we have for a while, I think. I think. I don't know who else. No one else is eligible to my knowledge, but you never know. I've been surprised before. Uh and then according to city policy, we do a a Christmas bonus uh that goes out to all the city employees, uh full time people. And then also goes to city council people. So you'll be seeing a fifty dollar deposit in your account next week. Uh we're doing that a little early this year because the way payroll schedule works. That'll be coming out next week. And that's everything I had today, sir, I promise.
Okay. Any questions? All right. We'll now move into our second opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the room care to make a comment?
No comments, though.
How about anybody online? Okay. Well, if no uh hearing, no uh request for comment, then we will move on to council comments, councilman by.
I don't have anything.
Councilman McCarty?
I'd just like to say since the volleyball girls are here. I've watched a lot of volleyball games in town and worked a lot of them and this is a great team, probably the best team I would say we've ever had.
Thank you.
That's saying a lot because they're not the first ones that are champions either.
No, I know.
That's that's
I watched them all. These guys were good.
Councilman Lowen?
Go Trojans.
There you go. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.